I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education's regular meeting on June 20th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is no time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off your cell phones and stay until the pleasant evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Anishinaabe people whose traditional land we are gathering on today, to recognize the Anishinaabe people and their industrial lands, these are expression of gratitude and appreciation, and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time memorial, and whose land on which the Saginaw Triple Plate Indian tribes have resided, we know have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it important to understand the longstanding history of that land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is a local. Courtney Seigman here, Jessica Dernigan.
Here.
Willie Pangle.
You.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Dana Coughkin.
Here.
Tim Oderkirk.
Here.
Amy Bell. Here. Next was the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or change? All right, that goes into the superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item I have to report this evening is the annual report from the Mount Pleasant High School or Mount Pleasant Public School Athletic Department, and so we'll introduce to you for the last time Miss Juan Song, Mr. Jim Padaway.
Heads for smile. Although I enjoyed all the board meetings, but this one's extra special, so I may smile more than normal. But good evening, thank you for allowing me to report. It was nice to go through an athletic year, a little more abnormal than most, so I'll just kind of go through it quickly here for you folks and answer any questions at the end that we have. So first page there, as you can see, no changes in our league at this point, so we moved through Saginaw Valley League with no changes. I don't, the one change you'll see next year is the two Traverse City schools, Traverse City West and Traverse City Central, they have joined the Saginaw Valley League in football only. They have been, they were asked to leave their league because of their dominance up there, they're much larger than most big North schools as per enrollment, and I think the other schools just got together and said, "It's time for you big boys to go find somebody." So the Saginaw Valley has elected, allowed them to come in on a trial basis for two years, so you will see both Traverse City Central and Traverse City West on our football schedule starting this fall. We play both of them, one home, one away, and that what they will actually count in the Saginaw Valley League standings, just football. They would, they would love to see us take them in all sports, but with distance, that's for the future to look at that and see how. So it's a good start to football, but as we know, weather's a lot better in the fall than certainly the winter sports. So second page there, you can see we continue to do a really good job in regards to our divisions between the boys and girls sports. They both offered 13. You can see 40 teams right across the board. It's the second or third year we've had a freshman girls basketball team, so that certainly helped. Our student athletes, our number of student body has certainly fallen. This year it was at 28%, we have been close to 40, 42 in my time. I'm going to use COVID as somewhat of that, that when we're getting back, you'll see as reported on the ninth to 10th graders, the limited number of kids that were participating, but it's coming back, it definitely is coming back. As you can see, the excitement built throughout the year, not only with spectators but the number of kids that joins spring sports compared to fall, so it's just having a year or two off that I truly believe that that will be back up. This is very similar to most schools in the state of Michigan, or probably across the country, so it's not a major panic. You can see that 151 girls participated and 148 boys participated, so again, across the board. One thing I've always highlighted, and I hope this can continue, the success of Mount Pleasant Athletics is due to a hardworking coaching staff, support staff, whether it be administrators helping in the elementary levels or middle school level or the high school level. Twenty-four of our 40 head coaches are Mount Pleasant Public School employees, and we continue to be a leader in that. Really helps when the kids see, you know, the coach in another light, they understand that they're not here just to yell at me, but they are here for kids, you know, they took, you know, they took, their vocation is in helping kids, so that's, hopefully that can continue. Of course, as do new teachers, that certainly is a plus. Next section, as I mentioned, the ninth to 10th grade, only 18% of our freshmen participate in athletics. Somewhat alarming, that number needs to grow a little bit as the middle school AD. Our eighth grade numbers were a little bit better, that number should improve next year, and of course, with some of the kids that transferred from local schools after eighth grade. That's an unknown, but we certainly should pick up kids with everything that we offer. 26% of the 10th graders, and then we jump up to more, 39% of the juniors, and then 38% as seniors, and that's pretty accurate over the years. Once again, the girls, the girl athletes led, 79% of those that had a 3.3 or a bachelor, which we recognize now in the Saginaw Valley as all academic, and then the boys were 53% of that, and that's a cumulative GPA over the course of their high school careers. The next page I won't go over, but that just broken down into seasons, fall, winter, and spring, and you can see in the parentheses where each team finished within our Saginaw Valley League. And again, understand that we had numerous state champs in the Saginaw Valley League. Again, every year we seem to have a state champ. It starts with Grand Blank and all 2,750 kids that they have at Grand Blank, and then, you know, the enrollment goes down. So our kids compete, our coaches compete, and we do a very good job in a very difficult athletic league. So at the bottom of the league award, for those that don't know, that is for every sport that you offer, you finish a certain place, you get a value in that. So if you finish first, and there's 10 teams in the hockey league, and you finish first in the hockey league, you'll get 10 points and so on and so forth. So the boys finished eighth after all this, and the girls finished 10th, that's a tick up from last year, so it's encouraging. The sophomore class, I think the coaches are extremely excited about it, you can see us in numbers, so I trust that will continue to rise and we will, you know, always be competitive within this conference. MHSA events that we hosted, kind of a shorter year, maybe because the AD knew he was getting out, I'm not sure, but you can see we still are a desired school system with our facilities and our location to host many MHSA sports, and I'm sure that that will continue to increase, and that's really, that's a great thing for community and obviously, you know, to showcase our school system as well. Multi-sport participation, this is a big one with the MHSA. Safety comes first, and then I would put multi, I would say anti-one-sport comes next with the MHSA. Trying to get kids to play a second or third sport, a multi-sport, not concentrate on that one sport. It's difficult now with the clubs and the AAUs and the pressures out there with the universities, but we know so few kids get that full ride scholarship. We do a pretty good job at Mount Pleasant that does that, our coaches do a good job of sharing kids, again, because of our size. If I'm Grand Blank, it's a little easier to just have a basketball player, just have a tennis player, just have a track kid, but you know, at Mount Pleasant, just where we are, we need those kids to play a second or third sport, and our coaches really do a good job with that, so we hope that that certainly continues. And then lastly there, you'll just see some of our kids, and I always say this, this is my disclaimer, that these are the kids that we know are going to continue on to compete in athletics, and it's interesting, this year, you know, you have someone going to Nebraska, somebody going to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, someone going to Kentucky, and a special one going to South Carolina. So you can see the kids are branching out, you're going to have, you're always going to have the local kids, but it's exciting, and that's a sign of our times that these kids can go out and, you know, keep on with that and go a little further, so. Any questions on any of that?
I do, it's not really a question, and it's for your successor, not for yourself, but I would love to see a summary like this for our middle school as well. I don't know whose job it would be, but it's pretty helpful for me to get that picture of the high school, and I know if you start to compete at the middle school as well, to get an idea of how that goes, and then ideally give the successor more work if we could see over the years how it changes, because here, we've seen it, but the public may not have seen what it is like, how do we change the number of people?
Sure.
Even having like a picture of that four or five years would be helpful for me.
Yeah, so that whole school report could be done fairly easily.
Something similar, maybe it's shorter.
Tack it on, tack it on, anything else?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I have two questions. I wanted to know if you could tell me how the, you know, average GPA this year compares to years past?
I would say from an athletics standpoint, I think we're above average. I didn't see any high techs, and certainly, you know, we didn't, we're not losing kids ineligible, so definitely, you know, when the kids weren't physically in our building, that was concern. I think this year we're right back to normal. We'll have a couple of kids that struggled a little bit that became ineligible, but I don't think it was at any alarming rate compared to most, all the other years.
Okay, thank you very much. My other question is, when you're talking about like students who participate in multiple sports, is that good for the program in your opinion, good for the students in your opinion, or good for both?
Well, I think it's good for all included, I think it's really good. What we're finding is that if you're not, if you're not a starter, if you're not, you know, a star player, or even, the role player is hard to find now. Kids just don't want to do that, so you may be pretty good in one sport and then be average, a little less than average in another sport, but we need those kids. I mean, we need those kids, and those kids get better, so their athleticism is just taking, just competitors overall. It's a great challenge for kids, so. And again, coaches get that out of kids, you know, coaches are always getting after kids saying, "Hey, you know, I have my sport over here, have you ever thought about that?" So.
Well, again, working on learning to get good at something you don't necessarily have like innate aptitude for, that's a good life skill, right?
Absolutely, yes, yep, yep.
Other questions for Jim? The next item on our agenda is the MHSA membership resolutions. Jim, did you just want to discuss that?
Yeah, thanks, Jim. This is just the annual MHSA membership resolution that the board must approve. It allows us to be part of the MHSA. Again, we don't pay a membership fee to join the MHSA, but once we, once this is passed, we understand that there are certain rules, regulations, all of the above that we must fulfill, so therefore we can play in our tournaments. So this is an annual ask every year that every school that's part of the MHSA, and this does include the middle school as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? Thank you very much, just one more time publicly, thank you for your commitment to our district, you will be missed, but we expect to hear all about your travels abroad and your big movement to get back.
Oh, thank you very much, it's certainly, it's been a pleasure, and as I've told some groups, that I'm very fortunate to turn a hobby into a career. I mean, people paid me to work in sports, so no complaints in this camp, so thank you very much.
Next one, our producer Darby Bieber. Darby's going to go through our end of year testing data and talk a little bit about the diversity, equity, and inclusion team at Mount Pleasant Middle School, so thank you, Darby.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Back. I'm going to talk about two things tonight, and one is our MWA data that has been shared with you, I think, a little while ago, but it shows our MWA data in a required format from MDE that we have to share with you mid-year and then end of year as well. So the data is shared with you in two different ways, one is growth, and then one is just achievement, and you can kind of think of the achievement as when they're at grade level, and then the growth is taking them from where they are to like a growth of one year from there, like nine months. So a student is at first grade level, our growth is to get them to second grade level. So they're presented in two different ways, and you'll see that. So on Table B, which is the first one, that one shows the percentage that has met their growth, so the number of students, it's broken down by our subgroups there, and the first one for all students, I think you have to put on the next, no, sorry, that's right. So the ones that were up there before were the mid-years, so this is the end of the year reporting, so for all students, 61% of our students K-12, or K-8 doesn't want to take the MWA, that have met their full year growth in reading, and 58% of all the students have met it in math. And the goal really is about 80% is where we're headed, and those goals, again, are not, they're kind of a lengthy goal, so it's something that we're shooting for making growth each time, but then also our goal is to get to the 80%. And as you can see there, it's broken down by our subgroups with the economically disadvantaged, special education, Native Americans, white, ethnic American, as you can see. So that's the first part with the growth, and our goal's 80%, and we're sitting at about the 60% level for K-8.
Can I stop you for just a second here? I have a question on this. So basically, you're telling me 61% of the people, of the students have made their grade level change, right? So they, if they were.
From where they started.
From where they started, they made a grade level, so 40%, you know, like if they started first grade, now 40% of them aren't at second grade yet, and yet we're moving them up to second grade. So how do you deal with, you know, that 40% that aren't at second grade, and yet they're going to second grade, and do they fall farther behind each year, or how do we deal with that?
Yep, so a couple of answers to that, first of all. So when you're thinking about, I could have a sixth grader in the middle school that might be, their score might be a fourth grade level. So our goal is to take them from that fourth grade level to get their one-year growth, but again, they can also get more than that, right? And if we go back to other things we presented on before with our NTSS, when we thought about our Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, we think about that pyramid. So those students who are not where they're supposed to be, are not making enough growth, they fall into that pyramid of what interventions we give them specifically. So it matters what level, if they're at a K-2 building, a 3.5, a middle school. In our building, they might end up having one of those math foundations classes, which are the support classes. We've talked about interventions that we've given during our zero hour. The elementaries have kind of those focus groups that they would use based on their data to give them that extra additional time in whatever subject they are low in, or not making enough growth.
Okay, thank you.
When you continue down to the next report then, is when we're kind of like, how many are at the grade level they need to be at? So if they are an end of the year sixth grader, how many are at that RIT score or the norm level score where we need to be? So when we look at this one, I kind of did some averages on it as well, it's, we have it broken down by each grade level, but the way that they reported, they do K-2 together, 3.5, and 6.8. So if you can see on the reading goal, that what they want us to have for K-2 is roughly 56%, and I kind of, I averaged percentages, which I know is not 100% correct, but roughly, we have like 56.3% when we're averaging percentages. So, and then in math, our goal is based on a state of 59%, and we're roughly at about 61% for K-2. So I feel pretty solid with that K-2, the students where they need to be at this time for end of year. If you look at 3.5, again, averages of averages, but the goal is 59 in reading, and we're roughly at 52, so a little lower there, and the goal in math is 50, and we're roughly at 48. So we're getting there, and we are making great progress on that, and we're not very far off at all. The 6 through 8 for reading, the goal is roughly 50%, and we're at 54, and the goal for math is 50%, and we're roughly at 44. So I kind of like to see that total of where they need to be when they were setting those goals. So very close, and I feel like the other piece to these RIT scores are the MWA, how many students are where they need to be. They have a great projected proficiency for our state assessments as well. So if they say 54% of our seventh graders are where they need to be roughly for reading, we can kind of correlate that pretty closely with the ABSE of the percentage of students that will be proficient on the ABSE as well. And at the high school, they cannot have the MWA, but the goal is that all students will be college and career ready, and they're continuing to work on those goals at all times, especially with credit recovery and doing some additional curriculum work this year with looking at those essential skills that we've talked about, and building their curriculum up, some same, you know, common assessments, focusing on the skills and that credit recovery. So their goal will just continue to move forward in their work. That is the end of that data, so if you have a question?
I do have some questions. So one aspect I'm confused about is we started, we started with stating that 80% is what we like to see, and we are lower.
For the growth.
For the growth. And so when you talked about the state averages, was that not growth then?
No.
That was, that was achievements?
Yes, where the students that were at the grade level, where they needed to be. So achievement versus the growth. If you look, I just kind of pulled it up, and explains exactly those percentages where it needs to be as well.
So then, that makes sense, achievements?
Yep. I do want to add too, that I think that coming off our COVID years as well, I think that at some point we're going to not be able to use that as an excuse, right? But still coming off a nice solid year of school this year, I do think that our students are making great growth, and I do think those achievement parts of those scores are pretty solid for us coming off of that year.
So one question I have, and you might have given one, or there might be more for everyone, is whether those numbers are similar when we look at year-long assessment rather than that MWA point, if you know, right? It's not a good day, if there was a storm the day before, I mean, you know it, and then scores are different, whereas our year-long assessment may be a little bit more solid. Do we see that similar? So if we look at the beginning, right, like that 40%, that's not quite getting the growth we want. Is that similar numbers when we look at year-long assessment, or is that a little bit lower? And if we don't know, I don't expect you to answer, I'm just curious.
I think it's different though too. I think that, you know, the MWA really picks up on the skills that they're lacking, and it has that adaptive piece as well, so it moves them kind of up and down to get them that middle level, and so I think it's a different type of piece of data, and they're, like if you're thinking about a year-long assessment of a math class or something that they're in right then, I would like to think that those percentages would be a little bit higher of their growth and their achievement because they're in it right there. These are skills that maybe they're still continuing to get extra practice on, and they're just not maybe there yet.
I'm guessing the teachers have all this data, and so wondering is, is connect them at the middle level, like what are we doing with it? Because like the MWA, it's, I get it, like it's an easier one, and I've got a number, and we have to, it's not like we have a choice but to connect that, and I'm wondering if there's a way for us to start to coordinate a little bit with that, all the work that our teachers are constantly doing to connect the data, and what we're doing with it, and I, that would be probably a principle, I'm not even sure.
So depending on the grade level, that work is already happening. So for example, if we're looking at a student that's in K through fifth grade, when the building PLC teams meet for their grade levels, they're triangulating the data. So they're looking at not only NWA and their chapter assessments and those kinds of things, they also are looking at other formative and subjective assessments that they use in the classroom. At Darby's level, they're doing the same thing in their building teams, so they're looking at all the data. If you remember, this report has been a requirement of us just for the last two years, really, I think because of the pandemic. I mean, there wasn't this progress report, there wasn't this whole requirement, this is all new, just in the last two years we had to do it. It initially started as part of the COVID Extended Learning Plan, remember, that we had to do in the summer of 2020. So it's sort of a branch of that, so I don't know to easily report on that to this group, we could work on that, but that's work that's being done in the PLCs, in our building teams, and that kind of thing already.
Thank you for reminding us that it's true, this is pretty new, and I don't want to add work to anyone, but if at some point when these groups do connect the data and have some kind of, you know, data force, where we can start to put things together, I think it would be helpful for us to see, because we do get stuck on these numbers, like 40%, right? And it's a, because it's a one number, one time thing, it's easier to remember, and I'm guessing we are higher, just because, you know, year-long assessment tends to be a little bit more accurate on the student's true performance level, and so whenever those groups get there, I think we want to see without any uncertainty. Thank you.
Darby, when do we see, or are we going to ever have the high school lead on some kind of a NWA or some kind of assessment that we can, other than what we're seeing here, which really isn't a whole lot?
And I think that with the high school, we can also look at the PSAT data as well, and this doesn't have our ABSE and PSAT on there, but those are some pieces of data we can look at, along with continuing to develop those local assessments and what type of data we'd like to present to you guys on that side of things, and we can also look at that alongside of the high school versus the end of the year.
You can look at PSAT and SAT scores.
Yeah.
SAT too, sure. I only have PSAT. I, it's just nice because we've been using the NWA, you know, and so when we see this over and over, the only thing I would like to see us do, instead of comparing ourselves to what the state wants us to do, I'd like us to say, we want to be at this percentage and go for that, and don't care what the state does. I think, you know, we've got the ability, you know, to raise our numbers and not worry to compare us to the state, but what we're wanting to do.
And we do set those goals in like our school incrementer now, it's called MYKIP, and we just met the other day with some principals, and really looked at how we can just kind of increase our percentages. I think we roughly said like 7% was, or 10% or something each one, we really just want to see that growth each year.
Yeah, and, you know, personally, I think if we hit the K-2, we keep them as high as we can, that's just going to keep moving up. So, you know, that's why I'd really like to see us concentrate on K-2 numbers going higher and higher, because if we get them young and early, then it's automatically going to filter out.
We just have to remember that the skills are different, and each one has those grade levels, but also kind of those spans or spans of grades too. So once we get them in K-2, we get those solid skills, but then it continues to grow as it comes on to.
Just get the good solids there before they go to 3.5, then it just helps all the way up.
But we can easily look at what additional data we can start to try to come back to you guys next year. Okay. I'm just going to talk about our diversity, equity, and inclusion team that we have started to work on building at the middle school, and we actually sent out our middle school DEI team application towards the end of the school year, and we received about 15 applications, and we have quite a variety of kind of who makes up those 15 applications. There were seven parents, five teachers, four support staff, two alumni, eight community members, and two administrators. So remember, they can double count, right, in those. So 15 members, that includes two administrators, myself, and the assistant principal. And our plan at the moment is to keep all 15 of those members to move forward. And our plan at the moment is to keep all fifteen of those members to move forward with our D E I team for the middle school. That we are going to set up a initial, an initial meeting in the beginning of August. And then for our meeting schedule, we're going to, we're going to discuss everybody's availability and start to work on kind of a good day and times that will work for our team. We're looking at, to start out, meeting one time a month. And we have a few different tasks that we feel like our team needs to work on and review. And the first thing is before even signing out this application, we did quite a bit of work talking to different community members, talking to different people in the schools, a variety of people trying to figure out what do they feel like we need in our middle school based on kind of like the D E I side of things. And in our end product, we ended up talking to two people from C M U, Andy Blom and Shannon, I think it's De Tor or De Tori. And they have a great professional development program that's ten sessions that deals with really kind of taking a look at where we are at with our inclusion and trying to help us move forward. It's kind of along the line of a little bit of an audit and really helping the staff move forward through kind of ten sessions of a specific curriculum that they have used and take us from where we are and become, you know, more diverse and equitable and also inclusive. So they also are going to work with us to build a student leadership team within our building. And that student leadership team, they have a specific curriculum that they put the students through. And that leadership team will be helping us as, as staff, also kind of D E I team as well, to help us kind of lead into being, you know, more inclusive throughout the building. So that is one large P V thing that our staff is going to be doing. The middle school staff, almost all of the staff meetings and P V will be focused on this. And they have grad students who will be coming in to working with us as well and, and following through these ten sessions. The D E I team or the task force kind of, they're going to, one, review the curriculum that Andy and Shannon are going to, are deciding, but that's one task they're going to review. And also the team is going to work on building a calendar for the year for ways for us to honor and celebrate diversity in our building. And that's something that the task force or the team will be working on. They're also going to be working on what assemblies or presentations do we need for our students, but also even our community members? What ways can we engage our parents, but also the community into some education? They're also going to review some of our Dachra Mark work that we've already done and see if there's ways we can try to incorporate more of that into what we are currently doing and then also communicating. So our plan is to try to do three D E I newsletters throughout the year that will go out to the community, but also can be put to all of our communication to, in every way that we, you know, communicate as a district. So those are all just some of the tasks that we have for the team. But then also I met with the D E I director from Midland and he is trying to put together a consortium, a D E I consortium in the area. So our goal will be to be part of that consortium as well in some way, myself or then even someone from the team too. So a lot of things on my list, my list is very long, but those are short little pieces of snippets that are going to get us started. And I'm really excited to see this work and how it really does help, help all of us learn, you know, together, but then also grow. And the one thing I wanted to remind all of us of, and I went back and looked at our strategic plan and one vision that we have on there from when we did our strategic plan work was that the vision of Mount Pleasant Public Schools is to create an inclusive school, community of engaged, inspired and empowered learners. And we value nurturing the unique abilities of each student and we value, and we value the inclusion of all. Those are two things that I feel like directly hit the work that we will continue to, to do that'll help us build this specific vision. But then also I'm just really excited for the middle school to be part of us looking forward on this D E I initiative. We also received a two percent grant for this and so we are very appreciative of that connection and, and their desire to work with us to for, for all of our work. So we are going to provide you guys with, the board with the dates of all of the professional development so that if anyone is interested in attending any of the D E I P V or at least coming into any of the team or any work that we're doing, we would love to have you be part of it as, as you see fit. What questions on that? I might not have all the answers, but it is truly a work in progress.
Hey Darby.
Yes.
I'm super impressed with everything you've just laid out. I've worked with Andy Blom. I'm, you know, you've clearly done a lot of live work. I like the program you've laid out. I'm wondering if this task force has a charge like goals beyond just working through, you know, the curriculum that, or the trainings that Andy and Shannon are going to help you get through. Like what is it? Do you have goals that you're hoping to achieve through this effort?
I think that, I think that our first, with our first team meeting, I really want to lay out the data piece of where we are and that would be pulled from some of the N W A data based on our subgroups, but then also our perception surveys. We've also looked at some other surveys we just did with MYKIP the other day and really trying to build for the team, like what is the, not just the problem, but the why? And really help them see the big picture so then together we can start figuring out what data we're going to use, of course, to show our effectiveness, but then also really set some goals based on what is the true story and what our students feel and see, you know, from, from that building perspective as well. So I don't think, I mean, I could, I could say a goal, but I really think that as a team, we need to build it as well.
No, that, that makes perfect sense to me and that's, that's a great answer. Thank you.
I do think that we are, our goal is to have one person from the middle school's team be connected with the district team as well so we can, we can do some of that figuring out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you Darby. It's on our agenda as everyone's favorite time of year. We have the final budget revision for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So take what you're doing.
Good evening. In your packet, you have a memo, a slide that, what's that right here? And I just transferred from the, you know, last decade and from PowerPoint, so I'm ready. And a resolution that coincides with both of these budgets I have for you tonight. The first one we'll look at is the twenty-one, twenty-two final budget revision, the June budget revision. In December, the budget that was approved by the board was projected to contribute back into fund balance, one point seven million dollars. Since then, we had some property tax and state aid decreases. Taxable value went down a little bit, so our, our property tax income went down a little bit, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So not a, not a lot, but that plays into effect. We also had our final fall count, the final audit come back in and we did lose F T E from where we budgeted in December to currently. That was a difference of, for the blended count to blended count from December budget to June budget, a loss of thirty-four point five three F T Es, which was three hundred thousand dollars. There was also some small state aid adjustments. So the loss, total loss in the state aid and property tax revenue was a loss of six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from what we budgeted in December. We had some expenditure increases also, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's a lot of ins and outs. We had some decreases in the expenditures in the wait program. Our student count in that program went down, so our costs went down as well. The board budget did have some increases for overall district communication things that we've been going through and that would include any legal fees and different things that we have throughout here. The maintenance budget decreased by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we did have set aside in there a three hundred thousand dollar line item for P P E that we've been carrying forward, but we have received so many different S R and C A grants that allow for that P P E expenditure that I removed that line item. We did have to increase a couple of their other line items because we have had a heck of a year with a bunch of surprises thrown in throughout the year and just the increase of cost of everything in general right now. Our utilities budget had to be increased, technology, transportation, athletics, different things like that all had to be increased due to increased fuel costs and, you know, just the state of our economy right now. Salary and benefits increased from the December budget revision by five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So that's just the total summary of all the ins and outs. We have new insurance numbers since December, some new hires, some people that left. It's just a ton of changes that accumulate that, that five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And then just some other small adjustments in the budget. So that all together is a decrease in our, an increase in the expenditure budget of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that brings us to a bottom line that's still contributing back to fund balance, but now about seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Again, that's if we spend one hundred percent of our budget and typically, we're, we're close. We're usually, you know, within a couple percent total of our, our budgets or actual expenditures, but I don't think it will be any worse than this. So if you look at the next slide, we look at our ending usable fund balance, which in the audit is building and department expenditures, subsequent years expenditures and then are unassigned. That's the six point five million you see there. And then we are projected to contribute back this year, the seven hundred and seventeen thousand. So that brings us to projected ending fund balance of seven point three million dollars. And as a percentage of our total expenditures, that's fourteen point eight five percent, which is a change of two point three four percent from the December budget revision. You know, I kind of ran through that quickly and as I mentioned, there is a resolution here in your packet that summarizes all of this information, but in the format that you need to approve it in if you so wish.
Do we have questions for Ginger regarding the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget amendment?
Just to clarify, they, these are the changes from December, not from June.
Correct.
I have one question. Do we, is that kind of drop in the blended or the full, the full time? Is that pretty typical for us or is that kind of more this year than in other years?
I would say it's probably a little more from our unaudited count to the audited count. I think there were some issues in the counting of the pupils in the O A O S program that we're working through for the tour of communication piece and when they need to exit their pupils from the system when they're not engaging. But that's being worked through. I would say it's a little bit higher.
No, that makes sense. Yeah, you don't exactly where it's coming from and what, so you, yeah.
Yeah, I might be something to highlight is, don't forget that the rules on whether you were a student or not changed drastically during this.
Drastically.
And there was a total of, I mean, this is to measure whether a student was a student or a student.
Yes.
And all of those rules are now, now, now it's back to the old way.
How long are all of them? I, I think we still have more options than we did prior to the pandemic. But remember that the student loss that Ginger's talking about is from the wait program. So we, we've always counted those students differently anyway. But we had some options where we're really looking at two-way communication that was even more different than before. And we didn't meet the mark with those students that we needed to. So like Ginger said, we've worked through it very thoroughly since then, so I don't anticipate having that problem again so that the students that we are counting, we know we are able to help them.
And just to clarify for the public, this is an algorithm that's created by multiple counts through multiple years and multiple weighted. So it's not the number of people sitting in our buildings. It is a very complex, strange algorithm that the state creates to make a determination for this blend in for what eighteen month period times like that.
Yeah, so right now we're, the population changes a lot too. But currently it's ninety percent of our call count and ten percent of the previous break count is what, what makes the blended count.
Does that have the number of students in the district?
Correct. It's F T E, so it's full-time equivalent. It's not what's in seats. So that's a big difference there too. Do you want me to roll right into, oh yeah, because the action is later in the agenda, so. So we can roll right into the twenty-two, twenty-three new year budget. Again, this will change drastically by the time we update this in December and again in June, but we have to have a budget approved by the state prior to July first, prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. So we, and we just mentioned that June budget is projected to contribute back into fund balance, seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. As we discussed at the last meeting, we budgeted a three hundred thousand dollar stated state aid increase and a flat per pupil amount. I think that's very conservative. I think it will come in higher than three hundred, but not knowing where our pupil count will come in because we have lost the last couple of years. I think it's conservative keeping the pupil count level, but having a lower foundation allowance increase per pupil. So that increase on our blended count is the one million, forty-one thousand dollars line item that I used to have. There's also a lot of expenditure increases projected for next year. As we discussed previously, the most high program is leaving. That is also going to reduce our F T E sum. Those, those students will be transferred to the R A S E for us. So I calculated that into all of these figures. Building and department budgets is based on their previous year pupil count. So that can even go up or down throughout, from year to year, depending on where the pupil count comes in. So that was increased a little bit from prior year. Bunch of different miscellaneouses, ins and outs. We have like seven, five hundred line items in our budget. So I tried to pick up the big ones for you and lumped together a whole bunch of the smaller ones. The salaries and benefits is a huge piece and parents, an increase in the budget of two point five million dollars. At the last meeting, we did approve changes in two different contracts. All of those changes are included in this. It's also rolling everybody in the district up a step on their next pay scale if they have a step to move. It is an increase in the retirement percentage that we know and an increase in the hard cap, which is the amount that the district is allowed to pay towards health insurance for each individual. So all of those changes that we knew are calculated in this number, the two point five million. And it does look very large, but usually mid-year we negotiate wage increases for some of our groups also. And some of that for these groups is already included in here. So we're going to come back and ask for even more in the middle of the year for, for a couple of these groups. And as we discussed at the last meeting, also sub-costs are, are rising next year and custodial costs, those are in here as well. So all of that together is an expenditure increase of three point two million. So now we're looking at a budget for new year that is projected to spend into fund balance, not contribute back, to spend into. Again, this is just a very early starting one. We have no idea what our per pupil foundational will be. We have no idea what our student count will be. Those are two of the biggest pieces. So I, I do project it will look better than this, but this is what we have right now. So using our audited ending usable fund balance plus the seven hundred and seventeen thousand we're projected to contribute back in June, that brings us an ending usable fund balance of the seven point three million. This new year budget is projected to spend into fund balance, one point four million. So that brings us a projected ending fund balance of five point eight million dollars, which is eleven point three seven percent of our total expenditures.
When you did your expenditures for next year, I mean, obviously we're going to have transportation costs, it's going to go up markedly. Food costs is going to go up markedly. I mean, is that all being taken into account?
Yes and no. So food costs, like the food service budget is, it's in its own total fund. It's not included in the general fund. But yes, for, for fuel costs, for, I, I added a little bit more like I, I did in June. I carried that forward into this year. So some more into maintenance, a little bit into technology, transportation, utilities. I did increase all those in June and I carried those increases forward to this year.
How confident are you that the state's going to come to a determination of how much they're going to give us? I know we're giving numbers. I know we're given numbers from multiple organizations and it's how you'd capture, but I'm confident that that number is going to be relatively stable. And I know relatively is irrelevant.
It is, yes. I will say that I have lived through years where they took a giant chunk of foundational allowance away and that I'm concerned in the next two, three years that may happen again. But that's just my opinion. I'm confident we will get an increase this year. What happens when somebody else is in the seat and, you know, laws changes as we move forward, I don't know.
So I also know that they're looking at a lot more categorical instead of like a cross-the-board FTE. Do you think if they go more down that categorical route, do you think that's going to change these numbers significantly? Or we already have a lot of those structures and is this the shifting of those numbers to those categorical areas?
I think it would be more of a shifting. We have a lot of, of the great start readiness and the at-risk and, you know, different funding like that. If we have more support there, that's great, but we can't supply it. So we can't take what we're paying for out of general fund and move it in there and then move it back out in a responsible way. We can't do that, so. It, it's a shelving for sure.
Last question I have is we mentioned that we have this process where after our final audits in August, we have, we get down to our associations and our actual fund balance really is based on how we thought that it's going to become. We probably will not see in like traditional years where that changes and the 3% increase from there. A lot of that has been already taken into account into that. So if you make a move that may get that, it's probably not going to drastically shift our financial structures.
The largest group that takes up the vast majority of the salary and benefit budget is already taken care of in this budget.
I just have to note that our projected budget for next year is almost $52 million, which is a very good chunk in this.
Teacher.
It's a big budget.
It is.
I just want to add to that the only group that we have said we will not bargain with is the teachers' association, which is also our largest group. So we, we do still have wage openers for all of our other groups. But you are right, it should not have a significant impact when you compare the number of employees in that association as compared to the rest of our district. It's more than 50% of our employees.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ginger about the budget? Ginger, you've got one more item on my report, which is the YOONYO auditing services agreement?
Yes, in your packet you have a very engaging letter from our auditors. Nine-page engagement letter is really what it's called, from our auditors. It just really covers the audit scope and their objectives, their responsibilities, procedures, services, fees, reports, all of that is kind of outlined in this nine-page letter. It's a standard letter we get every year, just saying that they will be our auditors and they will be responsible and this is what they're responsible for.
So we will under new business look at both of the budget resolutions again. Do we need to approve YOONYO agreement?
It's just for information purposes.
Any questions at all for Ginger?
I'd like to say thank you for your team because it's been extremely challenging years, years of dealing in this space, huge amount of people to pitch together, plus a new accounting system, so a top-level event. So thank you for all of that hard work and this is a beautiful undertaking.
The last item on my report is just an administrative update that I wanted to share with you all. As you know, we have lots of staff changes that are happening right now. Some we, we anticipated and some that are a little bit of a surprise. With Kim Funnel leaving our district, she leaves a big hole in our state end federal programs position as well as our adult and community education and alternative education programs. So I am happy to share with you all that we have appointed Jeff Pladdy to be our new director of community education and alternative education programs in our district. So yeah. It's a homecoming of sorts for Jeff, right? Back where he started with our district many years ago. So we do plan to post the state end federal programs portion of Kim's position, but I wanted to make sure that I have the opportunity to publicly congratulate Jeff. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of the structure under our new intersection this evening. But we're excited for the new opportunities for our district and we certainly, you know, would be remiss to not say that we will definitely miss Kim. She does really leave a big gap in our district, but we're excited for her also to be able to move on to new opportunities. So, and that's all for my report for tonight.
So that moves into the cost of financial report.
Do you have that with me yet? I have for you the information for general fund and special service funds comparing revenue and expenditure from last year to this year. This is for the month of May, so these numbers are a little bit wonky because the budget numbers do not reflect what I'm bringing to you for approval tonight. For general fund, revenue right now is at 60%, a budget this year compared to 72% last year. If you look at the actual detail, we have the same amount of revenue we see from last year, but the budget's bigger this year. So that's just a difference in budgeting. For expenditures, we're at 76% both years. For our special service funds, athletics, which is our self-sustaining sports, revenue was at 60% compared to 0% last year and expenditures are at 56% compared to 30% last year. This is the addition of dance into this group and there was a large contribution from sports coaches for the softball project, which is also in this, in this fund. The children's learning center revenue prior to budget approval is at 161% of budget currently compared to 95% last year. Expenditures are at 90% of budget compared to 75% last year. We did receive some large grants in this program in January that were not included in the December budget revision. The nurse testing program is 0% of revenue. This program no longer has any revenue income. We're spending no fund balance, 1% of expenditures this year compared to 0% last year. So anything unspent this year will be rolled into next year and they'll just be able to keep spending it down in the nurse testing program. For food service, revenue is currently at, remains at 116% of budget compared to 76% last year and expenditures are at 108% of budget compared to 59% last year. Higher reimbursement rates, higher costs this year. That budget could change drastically in this, in this budget that I brought for to you today. The school store is at 62% of budget compared to 37% last year and expenditures are at 45% of budget compared to 33% last year. For our treasury report, the general fund, April 30th, we had cash balance of $7 million. We have receipts in the month of May of $3.7 million and dispersments of $4.6 million. That brings us a balance on May 31st of $6 million. For that retirement fund, it's small this time of year, which has been huge principal interest payments last month. So April 30th, we have cash balance of $325,000. We had receipts of $1,500 and no dispersments in the month of May. That brings us a balance on May 31st of $326,000. And then for capital projects funds, April 30th, we had a cash balance of $26 million. We had receipts of $13,000 and dispersments of $265,000. That brings us a balance on May 31st of $25.8 million. Any questions? Thank you.
Next is correspondence. We'd like to acknowledge that this time we do not have any correspondence with the last meeting in the form of emails. And that goes into the citizens' request address before, dominate agenda or non-agenda. Oh, we do not have any of this one? Okay, we do not have any at this time. So that moves us right into the consent agenda, starting with the approval of minutes for the June 28th, 28th, or sorry, June 6th, 2022 regular meeting. Second. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that passes. Next is the approval of the bill for financials to the sum of $1,857,719.81.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. That moves us into resignations for new business.
Yes, good evening. Please accept the resignations from Brian Bryant, Becky Hanson, and Haley Schinder.
Is there a motion to accept the three resignations brought to us tonight?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes and we wish them well and enough to none. That brings us to new hires.
Yes, I'll start with our teacher new hires. We have Jas Linos Bolet joining us, Lexi Jorgens, Brian Cole, and Marlo Kubitski.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the new hire chart?
Still moved.
Seconded.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And you welcome them to the district. Thank you very much.
Our next new hires are two members to our administrative team. First I'll introduce Lisa Davis. Lisa is here in the audience tonight. I believe Lisa is heading into year 25 in Mount Pleasant, is that right Lisa? With three Euler grads and one more, one more coming through the system. So we're really excited to bring Lisa on the team and we hope that you honor her by your turn.
Is there a motion to accept Lisa as the vice principal at the high school?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you so much for taking on that role.
And next we're excited to bring Kristen Willie on board as another assistant principal in Mount Pleasant High School. My calculations are correct, this is heading into year 13 in Mount Pleasant, but at over 20 years overall in education. So we're excited to bring Kristen on board. I know we're going to be able to hear in the audience with her tonight and we think that Lisa and Kristen team will be a great dynamic duo.
Is there a motion to accept Kristen also as the vice president, or sorry, vice principal of the high school?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wonderful. Thank you as well for taking on that role.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
All right, next moving into the approval of the June 2022 budget amendment resolution. And this will be a, once motion is on the table, this will be a resolution of all public.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Jessica Dernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Willie Tangle?
Yes.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Tim Orker?
Yes.
Amy Baugh?
Yes.
All right, and that is, that says next is the approval of the 2223 budget resolution. So this will also be a proposal.
So moved.
Seconded.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Jessica Dernigan?
Yes.
Sheila Murphy?
Yes.
Willie Tangle?
Yes.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Tim Orker?
Yes.
Amy Baugh?
Yes.
Next is the SFE contract renewal.
I'll stop hogging the mic after this. We have in your board packet a approval letter from MDE. This is always kind of backwards. We have to send in all the information to Michigan Department of Education, wait for their approval, and then you basically get to approve it. This is for a one-year extension for SFE's contract. This is the third of four allowable one-year extensions. So if we so wish, we could do another one-year extension next year and then we'll have to go back out for the whole bid process again for a food service company either next year or the following year. I'd like to point out that this is, this reflects a 2% increase. MDE did allow us up to a 7.7% increase in food service contracts this year, but we worked with SFE and they've left it at a 2%, which is what we've had in the past year. So I did want to point out probably that they were willing to work with us and then actually increase them out. So this will be for the 2223 school year with Southwest Food Service Task Force.
Is there a motion to accept the contract renewal as a one-year extension?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. That brings us to the PSE budget approval.
Yes, as you know, PS, the social studies task forces have worked hard all year on the social studies updates. And so I've broken up the task force work into three separate chunks. So of course K-12, we have all new pacing and curriculum that we would like your approval for. And then each different school has submitted the materials that you reviewed at, at previous board meetings and we would like to move forward with those, with those purchases this summer. We do, did work as an administrative team to reserve the funding from ESSER, knowing that this was going to be a big task for our district. So this kind of breaks up the middle school request, pacing guides, they have their materials, the high school request, pacing guide materials, and then the elementary didn't really make a specific materials request, but they did update all of their pacing guides and curriculum. So one factor that kind of happened midway through this is that we now know that we're going to have one-to-one Chromebooks. So that does kind of play into our decision for online and hardcover. But the, the company is willing to work with us and so I didn't put a lot of specifics on exactly how many books and things like that at this time. But we know that we do want to approve the materials that they requested.
So is there a motion on the table?
Just a quick question, so this, is this the total cost and then ESSER funds are added? Or is this an app and all that ESSER dollars and all of the other sources are taken into consideration? This is the remainder to do the projects as for?
This is what we budgeted so far from ESSER for this project. And this, they're, ESSER pulls out in different chunks and different pieces of approval and this is what has been approved so far from ESSER. And if we did need to go back for, one of the things I sort of put on hold on this was that we're, we're curious about our ability to teach, for example, the psychology and sociology due to staffing and credentials. So I did leave that on there, but that might not be something that we move forward with the purchase this summer because we want to verify that we indeed will have that elective and the staffing to teach it.
Are there any other questions?
So you're, I didn't understand when you said about the Chromebooks and the hardsets. So these numbers may change, but this is assuming that you got all.
For example, we can buy a textbook bundle, it's called. So it's an online textbook and a hardcopy textbook. And we can order different combinations of both. And we just want to really verify how many hardcopies of, of the actual world history book do we want to get? I think last time we talked that those are $129 per book and that includes the bundle. But we can get some licenses of just the online only without the hardcopy of the textbook. So there are just little, you know, tweaks that we can determine with.
So this, this is a maximum request? It's not a hard copy number?
Right.
Okay.
Does that represent the 23 we're showing as the gold? Like I remember that having different, that was a request, it was a silver?
This, this wasn't the gold request. No, Sue did a nice job of doing a gold request and then a silver request. And she's, I know she's been on the phone with the representative a lot, so.
And so this is not the gold part that's?
I, I think the first time it was 300 text and 300 online and we didn't think we needed that. So we kind of worked together.
So just to clarify, the difference is the number of texts involved, not the actual, like text itself, not the resource itself?
Correct, correct.
This is the, these are the preferred teaching materials, is that right?
Correct, correct. Thank you.
Correct. So, so to further clarify, with us implementing a one-to-one program, we will likely continue to move to more classroom sets of textbooks, knowing that every textbook comes with an online bundle that our students can access as they have their Chromebook that they're taking home.
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense. I just want, I think I had the same question as with you. We wanted to know if these are the resources that were the most desired resources.
If you go back into archived meetings, I don't think that the different packages were different kinds of resources, they were just different numbers of the resources.
That's true. Thank you.
Ginger, can we afford it?
Yes, because luckily it's all built into the ESSER contract, so.
It is, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, we either spend it or lose it, right?
And I think technically we did reserve some funding for the elementary, which they're not going to be using what we allocated. So we do have a cushion to support, obviously the high schools are the biggest building, so.
So it would just require an amendment, which I know Ginger is great at, can't screw that. But it, it just takes some time to do some of those adjustments. When we recognize that we're not going to have to buy any hardcover things from the elementary, that can free up some of the funding for the high school. If we needed more, okay, of things that are approved on, but that makes sense.
So is there a motion to approve the PSE budget, um, as presented in our work?
So moved.
Second. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you for all that was involved in a very difficult process, that's a lot of work. Thank you very much. That moves us on to the Board of Education discussion. This is the opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns that they might have.
Yeah, I was hoping today that we could discuss, um, uh, a, a practice that I believe was in place. Uh, I don't know what it's up to be honest. When each board member, um, was assigned one school from our district for a duration of one year. Um, so that we can, um, maybe, um, how can I say that? Have more presence in our school and, and feel more maybe connected to the schools that are in our district. Um, I know that it was in our update this week and I just wanted to make sure we had a chance to talk about it publicly. Uh, I know for me, that's something that I feel, um, I would highly benefit from. Uh, I like the idea of a rolling system. I see it maybe as something where every year we could switch buildings so that, you know, six-year term, we get to see six of the seven schools, which is pretty nice. Uh, but I don't know how everything else feels. And Tim, you might have had some experience, uh, actually, you know, doing this.
Yeah, I think, because I was actually here, we had a class, and I remember why we, we actually stopped. So, uh, prior to that, um, each board member would have different, uh, different building that they would be connected with like a host. And so they would be like an official face for public events, per se, pretty much, uh, more than anything else. Um, what happened over time is most board members did not engage, um, after a period of time, um, in those buildings. Um, and so it just kind of fell to the wayside. These board members wanted to get, um, information much like we do now when Darby comes. And, you know, the different buildings come to us and present. Um, that was some of the information that they wanted where, um, this being a face at a, um, open house, it's not something that many of them, um, thought it was a good use of their time. And so, um, that program was ended at that time. So, um, it was, a lot of it was to be, um, another thing that we tried to do is, let's say, um, Vowels was the school of the month. We went to a board meeting at Vowels. And then that board member would be like the host there. Um, but what ended up happening with that is it confused the public because they never knew who we were having a meeting. Um, and so that's why we ended up going to one location and trying to keep it there because people always learned that was always there. Um, and so, um, that was kind of the two prompts of what the, kind of the role of what was in that program. And it was probably ended maybe ten years ago. So a good chunk of time was probably about ten years ago that we stopped. And it, I'd say it died on the line.
I can see the change of the patient being really huge.
Yeah.
Um, when I was thinking about, you know, well, what does that mean if I'm assigned, let's say Vowels or whatever else? Um, I know when I, uh, was looking into being a board member, I was given the same advice over and over. Go shadow, go follow, like, follow a principal for a day, follow a student for a day, follow a specialized teacher for a day. And I was thinking more bit like that, of like having actually, uh, you know, a firsthand experience of what is it like in this building? Um, that is from direct contact rather than, um, just presentations. And I really do value some presentations. And I think one day in school, once a month, does not replace the data by any means. But it does connect us in different ways, uh, where maybe the teachers get to know our face and the principals, et cetera. And so that was more when I was going at, rather than a public face at an event. To me, those don't necessarily go against each other, um, it can still be a public face at an event. Um, but that, that was more that idea of?
One of the issues that we were having is, um, when a board member walks in a building, the stress level goes way up. Um, and so, and a lot of the administrators felt that they felt the obligation to be the hosts. And so every time a board member went in, it caused a lot of, um, issue, right? Because, um, why are they here and what are they doing? I don't want you in my classroom because you're judging me and then all of that.
Yeah, I could see that, absolutely.
I mean, I have two questions about that. One is, um, I'll wrap it up. I mean, I guess, I mean, one thing that I have heard, I've heard the idea before that, you know, once, and this is why I always, you know, talk to administrators before I go into a building. I'm like, I, I get it that the stress level might go up. I wonder if that might change if board members are a regular presence. And I guess the, the flip side of that is gauging how much administrators and teachers with themselves and staff with themselves value this. I mean, that's something I think I would value it as a, a board member, um, for all the reasons really cited. But I feel like, you know, if, if we just show up, you know, once a year or like make a surprise attack, I can see where that's stressful. But like if we're, you know, a regular presence and part of that school community, I feel like there's a potential for that to be a little different.
I do wonder though, like here's, here's the one problem I see with that, if it's not more of like the after-hours event. Is that many of us do have full-time jobs that like, I mean, I know just speaking for myself, it would be very difficult to take a vacation day a month in order to be at a school. And I worry then that any school that was assigned to me, I wouldn't be able to make that kind of amendment.
That's my favorite concern too.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Um, and I get that, and I get that I'm in a unique position as a self-employed freelance person. Um, I wonder if the, and I'm still just thinking out loud, I wonder if the parameters don't, for what it might look like for each board member and each school team. Those might be diff, like, we wouldn't have to have them set in stone that you are committed to spending a day, a month, you know, during school hours at this school. But if we can, you know, find ways to make it work.
At that point, I mean, you can go to any school you want at any given time. And I have done that and I'm sure there's been other people who've done that. The problem is you're, you're getting a changeover of board members every two years. Okay, so maybe this person can do it, but the next person can't. And then maybe this school gets it all the time and that school doesn't. It, I mean, you're just setting it up to, I, I think it's a great idea and I think if we can go in there. And I, I think it's great when they send us things saying, hey, you're welcome to come, you know? And when I can, I do. And, and I think, and I encourage us all to do it, but I think if you set it up as, you know, not a requirement, but as a, you know, heavy duty, this is your school. And then you can do it and somebody else can, it gets, it gets?
I mean, that's a great point. I mean, basically, but, you know, what I just described is the situation that already exists. I mean, that's a, that's a really?
Right, now, right now, when we push it up, it isn't a surprise visit where it feels like we don't have that nurturing and connect. There's no setup to create a nurturing relationship at this point. It is only a surprise visit and I don't do it because I feel terrible. I feel like I'm adding something to the principles, which I don't, I don't want to do.
So I, I would, I would never recommend a surprise visit. Um, but, but like, like Sheila did, you know, to say like, this is where I'd like to go, this is what I'd like to do. Uh, I, I don't think it's challenging to set up an agenda, to set up, you know, to, okay, what do you want to see? You want to see a question, you want to see a launch, you want to see resets. What are the things that you want to be a part of? I, I think that is fairly easy for our administrative team to do. I think the hard part is, is when we invite board members to kindergarten kickoff or breakfast or an open house or whatever. As we host those events, we all have jobs to do when we're at those events. So that's the, we don't really have the opportunity to like, hey, let me show you around because I need to work at the event also. Um, so I, I don't know where the balance is, but I, I feel like if there's somewhere someone wants to go or wants to be a part of. I certainly can be that bridge to get that communication going, just like we did with Sheila and that worked out well.
Or maybe some, we could, we could host a school each month. And then they, you could say, okay, you know, any board members who want to come to the school, this is our days or whatever. I mean, maybe each school could host, you know, whatever board member could make it that day. And then maybe we'd be able to do it. And then they could work it into their schedule rather than seven of us just showing up at seven different times. I mean, but, you know, which would be, you know, great, you know, it's, it's, or Accretion Month at Vowels. So, you know, whoever can make it, can make it, you know? Can't, or, you know, this is our day, we're hosting.
What I, you know, I see, and I totally understand, like the job restrictions and, and the hours that this would make. Um, and the equalities we create between schools based on board members availability, which is not great. But what I liked about that plan was the relationship a board member can start to create with the school. And the issues of these open days is that we lose that connection. And to me, that personal connection is probably one of the most important part. Um, I don't, I don't have a solution. I mean, as I'm thinking, I'm thinking, what can we say based on our, you know, work schedules? We commit to visiting each school an hour, at least an hour more, like half day or two or something. And then that can be whenever, we would still lose the personal connection if we do that. But at least we have a little bit more of a commitment to actually enter those schools. And it wouldn't be, uh, a, I'm coming because I have an issue with the school, it's I'm coming because I want to see, right? So maybe less decoupled from events. Uh, and again, we lose, it's not perfect, we lose the personal connection and the commitment to be in the school. I'm not, I'm thinking out loud too.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all thinking out loud at this point, but I appreciate especially having Tim's perspective of, you know, why it died on the line as a work. I mean, there are ways to connect that don't involve being in the school during the school day, um, that could be special relationships. And I feel like this is maybe something to think about, to, you know, brainstorm and to have another conversation about maybe?
Well, it might be something we give to the principals to?
Yeah, to think about and maybe make a suggestion of how it would work for them.
Yeah, that, I think that is a?
That's a good idea.
It's a sensible next step because I, I don't want to spend, us to spend a whole lot of time coming up with a plan that, you know, makes the principals miserable. Or teachers or staff or, or anyone really, so.
Somehow setting up that relationships for that, it's not a surprise visit, it's not unusual. Because I feel like right now it's a bit unusual when we show up, uh, not that we need that, right? Not as something planned, um, and, and, you know, with the perspective that we, we wanted to be a nurturing relationship. We're not there to judge, we're not there to point fingers, but we want to be, you know, a more common sight at the school in a way that's not disruptive.
Yeah, I, I love the general idea, I think, but yeah, I just, I'm going to reiterate what I just said, you know, what, which was seconded, which Sheila just said. That the next step is to talk to the administrator.
So I can do, let's do that, we can have a brainstorming meeting and our administrative leadership team would just talk about, you know, what kinds of opportunities would it be? What would that look like and, and kind of go from there with it too?
I think the nice thing is because, you know, schools are always inviting us, you know, to different things. And maybe if you had one school that was yours, that, and they invited just you, you might feel a little bit more likely to go.
Yeah, that makes sense too.
I mean, somehow getting us more involved when it's both, both formal and informal, right? Is what we, that's what, is what I'm looking for. Um, and if that means I commit more of my time also be it. Again, you're right, if it's an invitation and it's my school, I'm going to feel much more pressured to go and it's a good thing. We should be at these events. I mean, that's why we're here. Uh, and so I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. But then when we're all invited, it's very easy, it's very easy to say I can't and then none of us can. Um, well, and to have seven of us walking into a building.
Well, typically we can't. I just want to, yeah, I mean, we can't have more than three of us at any school at a time. So, um, so, so I believe we can be a present at an event like we were at graduate. We should, um, as long as we're not, um, debating, we're not talking, right? So we're not, we're not addressing any business of the school, we are just present at an event. So we went to an honors assembly or an open house or whatever, and luckily have it, that all of a sudden if you were there, that's fine. As long as we don't start talking about wages for employees, right? So.
I do want to, um, kind of put something on your guys' radar while one of the, through different discussions and things like that. I'm talking about doing some type of board retreat, um, with sometime within the next couple of months where we can all get together. Um, of course it has to be, um, open and things like that. But, um, with your guys' kind of thought process, I'd like to send out some dates that we can kind of start that process. Um, so we could have a board retreat, um, and, and work through some of the things because we all have such a large agenda. And because of also too with our, um, with the way that COVID's been the last couple of years. And we've had a lot of crazy things thrown at us that we never would have thought. And we kind of know the general focus of what we want the school district to be and, and some of those general ideas that we can kind of have a, a retreat together. And talk about some of those things and, and do that. But something a little bit separate from the traditional Monday night meetings.
I think we would be benefit from that. And I know if this plan like joins and, and, you know, if everything happened, but I think we would all be benefit.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all have things that we, you know, kind of have in our minds or things that are on our own personal agendas as board members. That, you know, just everything's gone by the wayside over the past couple of years, so I, I totally support that idea.
And we have a strategic plan with goals stated in the strategic plan. So to, to re-initiate or see where we are with those goals before we kind of got to complete some of it, which would be a nice touch point in that whole process. And I was mentioning tonight in my derby, right? So there's proponents to it that, you know, we want to continue our district, we want, so I think we need to get re-engaged in those goals. The district and the community help us build them.
Here, here. So is there anything else anyone would like to discuss tonight? Not seeing, I call this meeting adjourned.